I heard.
Good morning, everybody. I call to order the Saline County Commission Public Formant and Meeting for November seventeenth, two thousand and five. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price. Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
I ask you all to stand and join me in a flag salute in a moment of silence.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move on to the public forum, we do have an addition to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we add item five to our current agenda, and that would be the appointment of, or the job title of Health Department Director to Jason Tiller.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. It passes, five zero, to add item number five. We'll switch now to the public forum. It's a time where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
First of all, did you want to back up and do roll call?
I did roll call.
They did.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Karen Shade, one-one-one Wisconsin. I put before you, and I'm glad to say it's outdated, some observations about the Second Health Advisory Council meeting. My concern is that the county is in the middle of a syphilis outbreak, and I really feel that that topic should have come up in that forum. So, I am suggesting, and you heard me do this when councillor, County Councillor Mike Montorio was present, that your future training on parliamentary procedure include Jason Tiller and possibly Dr. Doopie, and that they be able, or that they be instructed in how to add an item to the agenda. And part of that can be talked about publicly, part of it can't. That they be able to go into executive session to discuss confidential matters, and they may need to shut down discussion from the public in order to carve out the time to go into executive session. I do want to note, especially with today's announcement, that we are extremely fortunate as citizens that this syphilis outbreak didn't occur fourteen to sixteen months ago, when the public health educator and public health emergency preparedness positions, now filled by Jason Tiller, were vacant, when the then Health Department Director didn't have a medical background and exhibited problematic understanding of the public health emergency preparedness position during an enterovirus D six-eight outbreak in Kansas last fall, when the family planning nurse position was vacant. This position, along with the position that works with HIV, have likely played the largest role in dealing with the syphilis outbreak, and when the Board of County Commissioners essentially disbanded the Salina-Saline County Health Department Board of Health and went through nearly a twenty-month period before that Health Advisory Council first met. So, in a lot of ways, you've come a long way. I'm very grateful. I know things could be a lot worse. But I, to a degree, with the focus on bylaws and parliamentary procedure and some of that, from what I observed at Tuesday's meeting, that crew's a little bit buffaloed, and they're a little bit reluctant to state, to step in and take the kind of advisory position you're asking for, where they help you identify gaps in public health. And when you're in the middle of an outbreak, it helps you, it helps you reevaluate and see if your own ducks are in order and can proceed smoothly with addressing the issue. So, I just ask that you bring the resources you have to bear on, you know, helping them feel comfortable with their role and providing the training they need.
I thank you very much.
Thanks.
Seeing nobody else, I will move on to our regular business, item number one.
As requested for action, one ninety-five dash fifteen, Eagle Communications Fiber Optic Hub at Rural Fire District number five. I have Chief Dave Turner here, Rural Fire District number five.
Good morning, Chief.
Morning.
Staff was approached several months ago by Eagle Communications in regards of putting a, or placing a fiber optic hub at their South Fire Station. The hub itself would consist of a generator, the hub to place all the fiber optic stuff or equipment in, plus a propane container to power the generator in case of severe weather. Staff did present this product, present this project to the County Councillor for his recommendations, as well as legal considerations. He's basically approved all the recommendations that Eagle Communications had to provide. Most of that was legal jargon for the contract, making sure everything was in there all right. And Eagle Communication also had to do a survey for the easement, which they paid for. In return for the use of the easement at the South Fire Station, they would give us a one-time payment of a thousand dollars, as well as supply the fire district with a high-speed internet for the life of the contract, which is dated for twenty years. I think this is a win-win for both the county and the citizens around there. It will save us from paying the sixty-nine ninety-nine a month that we're paying right now for internet, which at best is very, very slow. I mean, it's a rural environment, so the internet's not that good anyways. So, this will allow the department to have high-speed internet, which will help in the training that we do for the county. Plus, it will save the department about eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine eighty-eight a year. So, that's pretty substantial savings per year, and about eighteen thousand for the fruition of the contract. Like I say, I think this is a win-win for both the department and the citizens in that area, and we would just like your okay to move forward and let Eagle go ahead and do what they need to do.
Very good, thank you, Chief. Questions?
I think the income would be great. It also is going to serve two stations, not just one, correct?
Yeah, the South Station isn't manned, and I mean, my office is at, but yeah, I mean...
North Station.
The North Station, where I need the most out.
They're going to cable it down there.
Yeah, they're going to run, they're going to run fiber optic all the way down Simpson Road, and then they're going to wire it old forty and take it wherever from there, so...
You know, the, my understanding was last week that there's a cell tower looking for a spot north of town, just, it was offered where that new church is being built, and they pay like six thousand dollars a year rent. And over ten years, that'd be sixty thousand dollars. I'd suggest the fire department find out who that is and get in touch with them. They use a fifty-by-fifty space. We could use the income if we have the space.
I would agree with you, but being that the legal, or not the legal, but the floodplain issues at our North Station would probably prevent them from putting a tower.
They would have to be raised quite a bit, like they are out there by...
Well, that's not true, because that church is not in a floodplain, so that's not true.
They are in a floodplain.
They are not in a floodplain, and they're lower.
He's talking about outward.
Our North Station is.
Is it? It looks like it's higher than that church to me.
No, the fire station isn't, because the Saline River comes right out and into their lap.
So...
Further questions or comments?
Well, I'm for the income, is what I'm saying.
I get, yeah, I got you. I think it's, I think it's a good ordeal.
All right, is there any public comment on this? Thank you, Chief. We'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I may we approve the installation of the fiber optic hub from Eagle Communications to Saline County Fire Department District number five, South Fire Station located on Simpson Road, as stated in the agreement and the recommendation by staff.
I'll second that.
Some motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Passes five zero. Item number two.
The Salina Community, or Saline Community Economic Development Organization Incorporated have comments by Rita Deister, and I see there's several other gentlemen there in the, in the back row, that maybe they'd like some time to speak, but to turn it over to Rita here initially.
Over the past year, the staff from the city and the Salina Airport Authority and Saline County and the Chamber has met regularly and coordinated with legal counsel to develop the articles and incorporation bylaws and members' agreement for the Economic Development Organization. And I can go through those and spot the highlights of each one, or if you feel like you've already know enough that you don't need that, we can skip that part, it's up to you.
Direction for the commission? I think we're all pretty up to date on it. Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to correct on is that it's the Salina Community for the minutes.
Yeah, that's what was, that's what she printed on here, but yeah.
Okay, it's Salina.
I started off with Salina.
Okay, okay.
Questions of staff at this point? Is there any public comment?
Ray Ruska, two thirty-five North Santa Fe. The instigators of this whole mess is sitting in the back home, but they're not willing to stand up in public and say anything. But I'm sure they'll have a comment or two after the fact. You know, I've attended all of these meetings, and I noticed there was a lot of issues going on, and I'm actually going to call it an oligarchy of corruption. And it all started at the first meetings. I mean, it was based on the city wanted it, and they come over to the county and beg for five thousand dollars so that we could get this started. Well, all of a sudden, you know, I asked them at that initial meeting that, you know, how much is this going to cost? And none of these participants could answer that question then, but they, I believe they actually knew. The issue comes that initially it was seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year, and all of a sudden, they've cut it back to one-half of that, of three-hundred thousand, but still, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, it's all going to cost, you know, more than what, you know, what that cutting it in half is. My question, one of my questions is, what is the funding amount in the future? And, of course, the Chamber is not even on board on donating any money. They're going to do in-kind, according to Greg Baeston, in-kind donation. Well, what amount of money is that? You know, no one's ever said, it just says, they're going to provide this in-kind donation. I'd like to know what the projected number was that they agreed, that this group agreed to by not including them and calling it in-kind. And to give you a quick summary here on, you know, this issue is, and I'll define this for the public. An oligarchy definition is a government by a few. In other words, government in which a small group exercises control, especially for corrupt and selfish purposes. Now, and every part of this whole thing, just as far as I'm concerned, stinks. Here, the Airport Authority is giving about a hundred thousand dollars out of taxpayer dollars, right? The Chamber, excuse me, the city is giving away money out of taxpayer dollars. And they're basing it on some information that probably the public doesn't even, aren't even aware of. But the issue becomes that, and I pointed this question to the county or the city commission here last week, I got to talk about it, but I didn't get to rebut any of it. It was based on what the mayor decided, that he asked me to sit down, and okay, well, I sat down, so I didn't have any rebuttal, but yet they seemed to rebut it, you know, of everything that I had said. That doesn't seem quite right. And here's one comment that I made, that economic development has been understood since World War Two to involve economic growth, namely the increases in per capita income. I did get an answer to that, is how is this EDO organization going to increase per capita income? Well, Mr. Gage's response is, well, it's going to take ten years. Okay, well, ten years times three-hundred-and-eight thousand, that's three million dollars. I mean, is that going to actually improve economic development or not? They can't even answer the question. I asked, I asked another question. I said, spend, spend, spend. Well, Mr. Gage's response to that was, you ought to be thanking us, Ray, because we're only asking for less than half. My question to that is that if you missed it by over fifty percent to start with, how did you determine you even needed it to begin with? It's, it's just like a moving target. They're going to come up with an excuse about everything they want to spend money on, and it just keeps going on and on and on. So, there was a couple of other questions here. Excuse me just a second while I look at them.
While you're looking, I'll rebut a couple of the things you said. I appreciate your passion on the issue, and you have been there since the beginning, so, you know, I appreciate your time and everything you look at. You used the word corrupt, though, and I would just take a, you know, a different view there. I don't think anything's, just because you disagree with it, it makes it corrupt. I, you know, I believe that everybody came to the table with good intentions in mind, and we're not, you know, this commission's probably not all on the same page, but I disagree with that being corrupt. As far as the funding concerns, and people have asked a lot about that, I know they asked us to go up to fifty thousand, and this commission was pretty much in agreement to stick to the twenty. And I think one of the comments was, you know, we're not willing to tie the hands of a future commission. So, you know, you talked about, is the funding going to increase in future years? It may be, but it has to be done through the commission, and it has to be done through an open process, and it has to be done getting public opinion. So, you know, we're, I mean, I think we're comfortable with that twenty. We, you know, we're not all on the same page here, but, you know, those are two points I wanted to make before you moved on, so...
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Chairman, and I believe what I said was oligarchy of corruption.
Okay.
And then I defined it for you. And that's what oligarchy means. Now, whether you, whether you want to interpret it as that, as, as, you know, government in which a small group exercises control, especially for corrupt purposes, selfish, corrupt and selfish purposes. Well, you know, here, this, this whole thing was started by the city, and there was a previous commission on that, too, and, you know, one real question that I really need to have answered is, how is this economic development going to increase per capita income of the public of Salina, Kansas, or Saline County? I don't think that they can actually say what it will do, but the issue is, is ten years it's going to take to make this work. I say that's absolutely ludicrous, and...
I think the goal of doing that is noble. I don't think you can say necessarily...
Apparently, you're not seeing the real, you know, the reason to generate economic development is not with money.
Yeah.
And everybody's throwing money at this problem. The opportunity has to come. You don't sit around and wait till it happens. Opportunity is the issue when the, when it is fulfilled. The people who are the entrepreneurs will step up and stick their money into economic development, not the taxpayer. We don't need to be creating more entities and organizations and calling it this buzzword of economic development. I don't know if anybody can actually predict economic development. And one of my questions is, it goes to you, Mr. Chairman, what would you do to create economic development in your business? What do you do?
I go to work every morning and try to get people through the doors.
Yeah, right. Is that called economic development, or is that just showing up for work?
I probably do better some days than others, but, yeah.
But you didn't plan this. He says, I'm going to just do this and throw down my own money, and I'm going to succeed or fail. Now, isn't that true?
There's, yes, uh-huh, that's true.
Okay, well, why do we have to change that rule for business? And, of course, in business, without business, there are no jobs, no taxes, and no government. Business is the key factor here that generates and pushes this peanut forward. It just, I've probably already said enough here. I could ask, you know, Mr. Smith, you know, what do you do to create economic development in your business? Do you have a business?
Trying to do a good job.
Okay. Is that, that's your definition of economic development? What is yours?
Well, I ran for county commissioner, got the job, and didn't know anything about development, didn't know anything about what goes in our county as far as that, and the Chamber. I've learned a lot about the Chamber being a commissioner. I've learned that they've brought before us a lot of good plans to bring economic development into our city. We, a couple of them came through. One of the big ones is our K-State grain testing facility out here.
Solid.
Solid, just a great facility. I mean, it's really a big, just in three years I've been here, that's just a fantastic. We've had good opportunities of things that we just couldn't give them enough money to get the business here. We can't help with some of those things. We, we made a big offer for a plan out south of town. The county offered a sizable amount of money, the city offered a very sizable amount of money for the plumbing, the Chamber helped, they worked on it, they worked on it. Somebody else offered more. We don't have the oil, we don't have some of the resources that some of these counties have. They're working on a, we worked on the, the train centralized station here, and worked hard, they worked hard on it. The Chamber, I admire the work you guys put into that, and you did a really good job. They have the tracks that go south, and it worked better in Great Bend, Kansas. How could it be better than Salina? You know, we look at it, how could it be better in Salina, Kansas? We've got the highways, we've got the airport, we don't have a train going south, and we don't, we didn't have what they wanted. But it's not that we haven't worked on it, and I think our econ, I've, I've always, since the start of this, I have appreciated what the Chamber, they brought, Dennis brought a lot of things to us, telling us what was going on, they kept us well-informed, and we made a couple of good things. We lost a few really good things, but I'm not going to blame it on the Chamber. I'm blaming on our, we don't have the things that some other people had to offer.
Mr. Price, I'm not blaming it on the Chamber, actually.
No, but what I'm saying is that my support has been on the Chamber.
Well, and...
And that's where I've stood all along, and I still think they did a good job, and I would, I've always made the statement that my support was to the Chamber, and so I'm still at that decision.
Well, in your, in your crushing business, do you have a parachute? So, when you want to jump out or jump, you know, you can just get free money then from the taxpayer so that you can succeed? Is that the way that works?
You know what, I'm not going to talk about parachutes, I'd say the wrong thing. I guarantee.
Well, one of the stuff we're talking about is taxpayer money.
Right, don't laugh.
And one, you know, one other, probably I'll just summarize this. I believe, in summary, the county should reject this EDO for the reasons that I have brought forward, and I do support the Chamber. I believe they're the ones that are supposed to be doing this, and we should probably help them if we can.
Well, I do want to say with the Chamber, too, they are providing a place and assistance on the phone, and you say that's not worth anything, but that is worth a lot.
But how much? I asked that question.
I would say it's worth a lot more than what we're given.
Yeah, well, we don't know that number, we're just guessing.
Well, no, go hire somebody part-time.
It is hard to say. I mean, I mean, if they went out and had to rent something on the open market, I would imagine it's in the, you know, I haven't looked for anything, but you know...
Final thing here, I want to ask Lucy the same question, so she can get in on it, too. You have a travel agency that you do things with. What do you do to increase or to create economic development in your business?
Well, first of all, it's a private business, and you have to spend, I have to spend money to make money. So, basically, it's advertise and provide a service. And no matter how much I, I can talk till I'm blue in the face, and I'm not going to make somebody come and do business with me, so it's just based on, on service.
You need to provide better service, because the only way you will get any economic development is if you take it away from some other business.
Which...
It's true.
Correct.
Or make the pie bigger.
Correct.
You can make the pie bigger. It's not a zero-sum game every time in business. I mean, you can make the pie bigger.
Well, I've tried to do that for about forty years, and I can't seem to make that pie get bigger or smaller, it just seems to keep going.
She has no control of what the internet does, though.
No, I don't. So, that's why I'm saying, I have to...
Well, I'm just saying that she has no control of that, she has to work harder to...
You have to spend money to make money. I mean, that's...
In other words, you're spending your money and taking the risk, whether you fail or succeed, in your business.
Correct.
Now, why do we need an EDO organization? So, they can tell us how to do that. We already know how to do it. The opportunity has to be there before you can just say, I'm going to make this happen, and when that opportunity shows up, the entrepreneurs kind of show up and say, oh, that's, it looked like a good deal, I'm going to throw my money into this, maybe like a Blue Sky Restaurant.
Well, and, you know, it was my idea, but the fact is, I did some partnerships with Salina Downtown and the Chamber and North Central Regional Planning Center that did help me a little bit on that, so, you know...
So, you're saying you can't do it on your own?
Don't know, we wouldn't know, but, you know, that was just how I had to get by, you know, to be able to get my loans to be able to open, so...
You've opened more than a few businesses in your time, and there's, you ought to know what the rules are, and I think you probably do. I'm going to, I'm going to let that go at that.
You didn't ask Jimmy, you didn't ask Jimmy.
No, let's go ahead, let's move on. Let's move on, Ray.
Actually, actually, I was going to, I wasn't going to ask Jimmy, because, but anyway, Jimmy understands this, he's been around a long time. He knows what the rules are. Nobody gives you anything on a platter and say, yeah, okay, here's your parachute, if you're going to fail, or if you get, if you've got business that needs a little bit extra cash, you go to a bank and get the money. You don't get it from the taxpayer. What's the problem with this? Is no one able to understand this?
Well, again, I appreciate your passion, and thanks for bringing up those points.
Just vote no.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Norman Mantle, Pleasant Hill Road. Boy, this is good entertainment. Tell you fix the problem, identify the problem, people are not going to come here. And the way I see it, this community does not pay wages worth a darn. I can go out of state and make a lot more money, which I have done. So, until the attitude changes around here, nobody wants to pay money. I don't know what the problem is with these people. I guess it's greed. They wanna keep it for themselves that own the business. And that ain't the way it works. It's gotta go around a little bit. So, until Kansas changes this attitude, the young men are, and the young women, they're leaving Kansas because they can get better wages. Go out here to the Votech Welding School and ask them. I know the instructor, and he says, "My students are leaving Kansas soon as they graduate, 'cause they can make more money. And if there's no attraction here in Salina, we're not gonna come."
Further public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for further comments or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we become a member of the Salina Community Economic Development Organi- Organization, Inc., as recommended.
Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two. Item number three.
OCCK Transportation Report by Debbie Atkinson, Transportation Coordinator of OCCK.
Morning, Debbie.
Good morning. Okay, well, I'm just here to kinda inform everybody what OCCK does. Um, I am the Transportation Coordinator.
You might bring that mic just a little closer to you, yeah?
Okay, I'm the Transportation Coordinator. Um, OCCK has been providing transportation for the area around here more than fifteen years. They've been providing transportation since their beginning, but it's pretty much increased quite a bit since we moved into the building at three forty North Santa Fe. Um, I have a handout that I gave you all with kind of a timeline of the progress. The transportation, we believe that transportation services are vital in helping people live independently as possible. Uh, we give transportation to many older adults needing transportation and people with disabilities. We believe that it helps the economy of the city and the area. We started CityGo in two thousand and nine. There was an es- they estimated when we started CityGo that there would be sixty thousand riders the first year. But in the first year, we had over a hundred thousand riders, so it's been a very popular transportation service. This year, for two thousand and fifteen, we estimate we'll have over, um, two hundred and fifty riders for this year. We average about nine hundred rides a day on CityGo. We run five routes throughout the town, cover about forty or sixty-five percent of the town. There's a hundred and eighty bus stops with several transfer points where people can get from one bus to the other, so they can move from the north end of town to the south end of town. We run from six in the morning till nine at night. We run two routes, or two buses on each route from six in the morning till nine, and then from twelve thirty till six, we run during peak hours. There's no bus service on Sunday, um, and each bus is wheelchair accessible. It costs a dollar a trip to ride CityGo, or two dollars, you can ride all you want, all day long for two dollars. You can buy a monthly pass and ride all you want for thirty-five dollars. Or you can buy, spend five dollars and get six one-trip tickets. Children under ten ride free, but they, um, they need someone sixteen or over to go with them, and, uh, someone can take a P.A. with them, and there's no charge for a P.A. We also do, uh, paratransit service, a demand, demand response for people that can't ride CityGo for some reason. That averages about a hundred and forty rides a day. Um, yet the cost for that is two dollars per person, each stop. Um, if you ride from out of town, it's ten cents a mile, and we round that down. So, that, um, we average about ninety rides a month to, that we bring people from the surrounding counties to Salina. And, um, they ride for various reasons, for shopping, medical appointments, um, and we... We partnered with the Hospital Foundation in two thousand and one, and we do, uh, medevan transportation. We take people to hospital-related facilities for, there's no charge for that. That, the people in that, and then we also do non-emergency medical transportation. We contract through the can care providers and transport people on Medicaid to medical appointments. All of those are shared rides. We combine all those to, with the, uh, all of our programs together to make the best use of available funding, so, you know, the hospital pays for one driver or one vehicle. Um, but we can buy, by combining all those rides with other vehicles and other drivers, we can do more rides than just one, one rider, um. There's a, this is our numbers. The one handout is our numbers for every year since we began CityGo. Paratransit numbers pretty much stay the same every year. That is because, um, CityGo is much more flexible than paratransit. Paratransit, you have to call in ahead of time and schedule the ride. We can usually do it. If we can't do it, we do an alternate time. But most of the time, we do it, but we also, when someone applies for the paratransit, a lot of people don't think they can ride CityGo because they have a disability. But actually, we have more people that use CityGo, that use wheelchairs than we have, um, do, that ride paratransit. So, I have, anybody have any questions?
Uh, the demand response, those are people that call you up for a specific time and place to go to be picked up?
Yes.
Who can, who can do that?
It's a curb-to-curb service.
Right.
They fill out the application.
Okay, okay.
And then we put them into our dispatch program.
Gotcha.
And a lot of people will do, ride that if they're going to, like, to a doctor's appointment, but if they're going shopping or something, they'll ride CityGo. They kinda, kinda...
So, just somebody can't just, out of the blue, call up and ask, do curb-to-curb? They actually have to fill out a form?
They have to fill out a form. We can take it, we'll, we'll let them ride at first for a, the first few times, but then they have to fill out the form and apply and be okay to ride the paratransit.
And what are, what are the costs on the paratransit?
It is two dollars for each stop.
Okay, so if someone is going to the doctor, I take it that you just take them there? And then, of course, they could be there an hour or two, and then when they need a ride back to their home, they schedule that as well?
They, they'll schedule that, but they'll call and say they're ready, 'cause you never know with the doctor's office, how long it takes.
Okay, so then it's two, two dollars each way? So, that would cost them the, the four dollars?
Right.
Okay, so that's still very reasonable for what you're doing, the, the curb-to-curb.
And you said ten cents a mile?
Ten cents a mile for out-of-town, out-of-county rides, uh-huh, and we round it down just so we don't deal with change.
Uh, the question I had is, how many buses are in your fleet? Uh, you have five routes, but I'm, I'm assuming you have more than five buses?
We, yes, we have fifteen CityGo buses, because we have to have spares.
Right.
Um, we have on pa- paratransit, we've got nine, um, buses and nine minivans that we drive.
So, you've got nine buses, nine minivans, and fifteen CityGo? Okay, um, and how many buses do you run per route on your CityGo?
On CityGo, we'll be running ten during peak times.
Okay.
And on paratransit, we run between nine to thirteen vehicles a day, depends on what, how busy we are.
What surprises me is I see people at the, at the stops, at the CityGo stops. Is your schedule printed on the back of the sign, or how do they know?
We have, it's on the internet, on our Salina CityGo.
I've had people tell me they don't have, they don't have capabilities of, of the internet.
And then we have maps in all the buses, and we hand out a lot of maps.
Okay, the, for the people that don't have a map and don't get on the internet, um, if they just show up to a bus stop, there's nothing that tells them anything there.
And we, and we're in the process of, we're gonna put, like, time numbers, what time...
Okay.
The buses will be there on the, on the poles.
Yeah, I, I, I kinda felt bad for someone that I was walking past one, and they asked me if I knew what time the bus was going to pick up there. It was downtown, and I'm, I, I didn't know, and I didn't have a schedule, and I couldn't get on the internet at that moment, so... Um, for the people that are savvy and use your system all the time, they, they've got it down pat. But for the people that don't have any of that, I just wondered how they, how, to make it easier for them.
And the phone numbers on all the signs, so, uh, you'd be surprised at how many phone calls we get, what time is the bus gonna be here, and where do I go?
Okay, that was my next question. Yeah, how do they know?
And if they call our office, the dispatchers and the CityGo supervisors are really good about saying, "You get on here, and you transfer to this bus," and they'll tell anybody how to get from here, the fastest way to get from here to there.
And I'm assuming that the stops that have the benches and the trash receptacles are the ones that are the most frequently used, and that's why you provide now, you know, the sheltered?
Those, are those donated?
The benches, we got a lot of the, a lot of the benches through Ara, through the, the grant, Tiger Grant. Um, and some of them are donated, and some of them are, we've just put them in.
Right.
Well, I think it's a great service to Salina.
I wanna say a couple of plus things about it. They were real good with our health department when we were moved in another location, made a route to bring those people, and they needed a way to get there. So, they were really good with that, since I've been on the commission. Uh, my aunt at this time is ninety, she'll be ninety-nine this winter, and she has had some skin cancer and is having chemo, and they pick her up, and they do a really good job, and she walks out to the bus. She doesn't use a wheelchair or anything. But she, she has a car, she could drive, but when you're gonna have chemo, you can't drive home, so... It's really been a plus to our family to have that service. And, um, another thing too, I was thinking about, oh, our church, um, purchased one of their old buses for our, for our kids to go out and pick up on a bus route, and not only they did give us a very good deal, they painted it for us, so we didn't have to paint, change the paint, is that correct? Do you know what I'm talking about? And, uh, gave it, they could've sold it on, but they really did help our community, our church. And we paid a fair price, and we knew it needed a transmission, but, uh, they really did us very well on it. And new tires, and we really have a nice used bus now. And they could've just sold it to anybody, but they kept it in the community, which is really nice, and so... I have a lot of positive things to say about their bus service, and I've never rode it, and I, I think as commissioners, we oughta ride it sometime.
I've ridden it.
I've never rode it, you know?
When I was a city commissioner, that was one of the very, I was on the very ground floor of that, so, yeah.
I think it'd be good, I think it'd be good for us to get on it sometime and just, uh, you could get us a case of beer or something, and we could just...
No, 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 no.
Pizza, have I some pizza?
Maybe a pizza, I don't know. You probably don't even allow food on there, so that's all right.
No, no food, no open, no open, no...
I was just teasing.
I know you are. One of the, one of the things I'd, just a recommendation, and I thought about this when I was teaching out of Kansas Wesleyan, is, um, I don't think our students out there ride it enough, and I, a lot of it, I don't think that they knew too much about it, you know? They just, sometimes they think, "Oh, I'm, I'm a Wesleyan student, I'm not a citizen of Salina," which they really are, but...
And we've tried different ways to, to pull the students in. We even gave the, a bunch of, like, free day passes.
Did you really? That's a great idea. I didn't think about it.
And I don't know if they didn't know they came in their beginner kit or whatever, and I don't know if they didn't know what those were, or maybe we needed to label them better, or...
What about the, uh, the K-State, um, Polytechnic students? Are they on there more? Because that was one of the things, when I was on city commission, they did not have, um, a route that went out there. And we saw that there was a need, because it was a little bit further out of the norm of the city, um, traffic. Um, I think there's one that now goes out that way, is there not?
Yeah, we have a stop at K-State there in front of the dorms and cafeteria, and then we have one in front of Salina Tech.
And so, are those used by the students? Do you know, or...
They get used quite a bit by students.
Okay, that's good to know. That's great.
If you're doing that for the Wesleyan students, that's the right way to do it.
Yeah.
I, I did not know that, so that's, that's good.
And I, we, I don't know if we did that this year or not. We did it one year, and nobody used any of them.
Right, and so why print them up and do that again? Okay, I, I just wondered.
I wonder, since you do go out of county and stuff, uh, at the county line in the mornings and at three o'clock in the afternoon, there's probably thirty or forty cars that pull up and pick up kids from Bennington?
Yes, I've seen that.
And I wonder if it wouldn't be a good place for a bus pickup at those times to bring kids in and drop them off for, I think, I don't know.
Yeah, do a roundup that way.
Yeah, yeah.
There's al- almost a hundred people out there at that time.
And, and, you know, we were kinda worried about putting a driveway in and somebody driving out, and there's thirty or forty cars driving out of that one driveway, and it's right on a hill. It's not a real safe place, so it would be a good, might be a plus for the...
Yeah, we'll look at that.
Might, might check into that, yeah, just a suggestion.
Further comments for Debbie? Is there any public comment? I think we have a public comment here.
Hi.
These are the schedules. They're on every single bus, right by the door, and, um, they really are wonderful. I need to say that as an old person with a slight disability, I would be dead in the water without OCCK, because not only do they provide CityGo, but I only get my social security once a month, so my main grocery shopping is once a month. I can take a cab, an OCC cab, they will call Sunflower. Sunflower comes to Walmart or Grocery Sir, whatever, picks me up and takes me home for five bucks. Now, uh, there's a limit on CityGo as to how many bags you can carry, so the cabs do not have that restriction, and I can get all my groceries at one time, and it's just so much cooler. But this is just such a wonderful program, and, and I really would be dead in the water without it, and, uh, I really appreciate everything you do.
Thanks.
On the cab, is it a round trip, then, five bucks?
Uh, he comes and gets me at Walmart and takes me home.
Oh, okay, but then you ride the bus out there?
Yeah, well, I can. Now, if I don't, if I take a cab that is not OCCK-approved program, fifteen dollars from Walmart to my house instead of five. So, it's a considerable savings, and, and it just really is an excellent program.
I just wanted to make, I knew that was right.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for your comments, Judy.
Thanks, Judy.
Debbie, you have anything else to add?
No.
All right, thank you very much. I'll take the public comment, though, too.
OCCK is great. I, I like it. It's, it provides a very good service. What I'd like to add to this is find out if OCCK provides an agenda and a packet that the public can access, that you can send? Do you? And you can email it, so that...
Yeah, I can email it, or, and you can, um, go to salinasidigo.com, and my email's on there, and you can email me what you need information.
Perhaps I could just get, uh, one of your cards, and it might be a little easier to, to do that.
All right, thank you.
Want one of my cards, Ray?
Yeah, you got one?
No, I don't have one.
Debbie, thank you for coming. I appreciate your time. All right, move on to item number four.
Approval of County Commission Minutes for the week of November tenth, two thousand and fifteen.
Is there any public comment before I take a motion? Saying none, a entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the County Commission Minutes of November tenth, ninth, two thousand and fifteen, as presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. We have our addition, item number five.
Item five, it's a, uh, appointment and announcement for, uh, Mr. Jason Tiller of the Health Department.
Rita, will you go ahead and just announce what it is?
Um, the commission has decided to offer, and Jason has accepted the offer, the position of Health Department Director. Uh, he's just completed, or will be completing his first year on the job, and we've all been very proud of Jason. He's done a great job and, and really has pulled the Health Department together, and the morale is much better, and... So, uh, we would like to announce that Jason Tiller will be the new Health Department Director.
Very good. Is there any public comment that hasn't been made on that already?
I think it's a great first step. My deepest concern remains that there, he might be overstretched with other positions and that, that the, the commissioners continue to monitor, because he has had a very important, necessary meeting this week. because he has had a very important, necessary meeting this week, but right now that means there's no one there. Should there be a health emergency where you need the, the skills of the health communicator or a health educator or the public health emergency preparedness? So the, the staff at the Health Department really step up and cover for these circumstances and the community medical professionals all help, but it's also important to have the structural framework in place. So, good job.
All right, is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just real quick announcement. This is a anniversary date of the eighteenth year of, where Jamie Doss sitting right here, working for the county. Today is eighteen years, so I'm real proud of her. She started off at the Prazer's Office and she's been with the County Clerk for four years. So Jamie, congratulations. Sorry to embarrass you.
Happy anniversary.
Don, thank you for, I did not know that. So Don, thank you for bringing that up and please do that again in the future if, uh, if we miss that. So thank you.
Well, I, I, I think we need to make a motion to accept Jason and, and so I'd make that motion that we, uh, uh, get, give, um, Jason the, the job as chairman. Or not chairman, but the director of the Health Department.
A second to that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. All right, any other business that needs to come before the Commission today? Under announcements, I do want to, um, we will meet back upstairs, uh, very briefly for unfinished bis- routine business. And then at one o'clock, uh, all five of the Commissioners are gonna tour the road and bridge facility. So obviously it's a, it's an open to the public. So anybody that would like to be out there, please come. Are there any other announcements at this time?
I move that we adjourn.
A second to that.
All those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned.